First item on the agenda is Communications. I thought we would begin by revisiting our district motto and also our district mission statement, so Cameron if you could put those on the screen. We have some really good ones. Our district motto is united in service for excellence, that's one we've had for many years and it's a really good one. Our Jackson County Public Schools' mission statement, this was developed several years ago but it still stands really well. We will stakeholders of the Jackson County Public School District accept responsibility to create lifelong learners and successful citizens by providing an exemplary instructional environment characterized by high academic standards and expectations that accommodate individualized learning needs of all students. So it's always good to revisit that, it is on our website, and we have two good ones. Thank you, Cameron. Okay, before we get into Communications, I actually have a really good announcement, which Ms. Phil Pop will be very happy, and I think Mr. Montz and also Mr. Currie, that we've been working with the Sheriff's Department, obviously worked with Paul Hayes during his term, and we were able to secure a SRO with the high school, Mr. Burry or Officer Burry, who does an exceptional job. We're also able to secure through the Sheriff's Department, a SRO for the Jackson County Middle School, Officer Weaver, who does a great job. And we've worked with Sheriff Isaacs, and he has a person, he's retired law enforcement, and is very interested in being a SRO, so we can have an SRO that's shared between our three elementarys. Our goal when Damon's working with us to do this as well would be to have one at each school, as qualified personnel becomes available, we will do that, but we've got three out of five, so we've come a long way on that. But that's our goal, and we actually have an item on the agenda number five, and we're very pleased to announce that, and we're very appreciative of Sheriff Hayes and also Sheriff Isaacs for working with us to do that. They value the school's safety just as much as we do. Thank you. To A, Jackson County Middle School recognition, we have Abigail Farmer, I think we have Mr. Carroll here as well, and also Dr. Kirby.
Hey guys, one of the best parts of being a schoolteacher is getting to recognize really exceptional students, and I have one anywhere you want, sister, it's the star of the show. So I have one here, this is Ms. Abigail Farmer. So Abigail is seventh grader at Jackson County Middle School, she's a dandy, and one of the best things about Abigail is her tenacity. She does not give in, she's got grit, and she'll stick right with something. So we have a program that Jackson County Middle School got this year called vocabulary.com, and it's a program where students work at their own pace to build their vocabulary. And of course, we assign little dabbles of it, you know, 10 minutes here to build your vocabulary. Abigail has put in 150 hours on vocabulary.com, she has mastered 1,500 words. So let's give it up for that real quick. So about Christmas time, I said to Abigail, I said, "Ab, you're way above everybody else, you're doing great. What do you think you could get out of your parents if we were to recognize you for your excellence?" She said, "Probably to be told, 'Good job.'" And I said, "Go back and ask for more." So in January of this year, I got in writing, "If Abby receives a plaque, I will give her $50 and that's signed Rachel, her mom." I believe that's a legally binding agreement. So here's Abby's plaque, it says, "Abigail Farmer has demonstrated outstanding achievement and tenacity in her pursuit of excellence in vocabulary development. Abigail has mastered over 1,500 words and has spent over 150 hours accomplishing her goals at Jackson County Middle School this school year." Here's her plaque, and Mom, I believe that's your cue.
Now Rachel? So you've got to match that.
So there we go. That's a really good example of what can happen when you have a great student and supportive parents, and what we can accomplish. So I thank you for your time, and I thank Abby, she's a dandy.
We'll move on to item two B, which is again great to use for our school system, the Full Service Community Grant, Partners for Rural Impact presentation. Mr. Mike Pop here.
Good to see you all. I'm Mike. You probably are used to hearing about us as Partners for Education at Berea College. And so after 25 years, we've graduated from Berea College and moved out and are now Partners for Rural Impact. And our mission continues to grow, and while the college is in our DNA, let's just say we just keep getting bigger and expanding across more of the state, and the opportunity to grow the work on behalf of kids and families is what we're really after. So Mr. Smith, I believe, shared with you a slide deck that's there, and we're not going to go through that step by step or anything like that. What we do want to do is share with you, the Partners for Education before, and Berea College, and now Partners for Rural Impact will continue in our partnership. And one part of what we do is providing services, and right now, Gear Up is in your schools right now. If we go back in time, the original Promise Neighborhood as well, and we're happy to bring and partner on the state scale-up grant. And what does that mean? Well, there were only two of these awarded nationally, and we were one of them. And it involves 12 school districts, about 30,000 kids in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and thinking, "That's great, Mike, what does that mean for the Jackson County schools?" What it means for the Jackson County schools is each school will have a site coordinator. And I know that Jenny, who actually leads this work on a daily basis, and Jenna, who is her right and maybe even her left hand, are going to talk a little bit more about the slides, about the particulars of it. We're excited to continue in the work. It's for five years, and I would say, people worry, "How long y'all gonna be around?" Well, in Jackson County, I think we've been around for about 20 of the 25 years. It's been a long partnership. And I used to serve as a superintendent, Berea Independent, across the hill, and Mike and I actually started as superintendents nearly, Mr. Smith, sorry, at about the same time. He has more tenacity and fortitude than I have, so he stayed with it long past where I chose to set aside. So Jenny and Jenna, which may be a little confusing, are going to share some information with you. And then what we really want to do is, as questions that you may have, create space to be able to do them. So Jen, can you share?
Yeah, so I'll let you go through all this, I'm not going to go through every single thing. One of those pages talks a little bit about the grant itself, the multi-LEA, which is multi-school districts, like Mike said, it's 12 districts, Jackson County being one of them. Each school in Jackson County will have a coordinator to help bring in the resources that they have access to through the Full Service Grant, and also just sort of build relationships within those schools to continue the type of work that they're doing in Full Service. The other part of this is, basically goes into what a community school is. Very holistic approach, it cradles a career, very similar to what the Promise Neighborhood did a few years ago in Jackson County. So early childhood, all the way through post-secondary to career opportunities. It's looking at math scores, English scores, state assessment, as well as that arts and humanities aspect, the health and nutrition aspect, social-emotional, a learning aspect. That's been a big focus for some of our grants in the past few years after the pandemic. And so, one of the things that's a little bit different with this one and the Promise Neighborhood is that it's one staff per school, but that staff's really working to bring in partnerships and build partners within the community and the school district. To kind of call it bridging out from the school to the community and vice versa. And so they'll be working on a work plan, and will have a budget to help the schools implement what their needs are. Not every school's plan's going to look the same, it's based on what that school needs and the partners in that community. It's also got family engagement, of course, making sure families are involved in the process. We kind of base this on four pillars of an effective school, you'll see that on one of these pages. It works on expanded and rich learning time, as well as those other aspects of the wraparound service to making sure kids have everything they need to be successful in school. Including dental care, one of those aspects that we look at is dental screening, making sure kids have that. Do you all have any questions? Have I missed anything?
I'm just going to add a couple of things. So we already operate a couple of Full Service Community School grants in some of our school districts, and Jenny mentioned dental. Really, it ends up being what are the schools' individual needs? And so I'll use Leslie County as an example. And in Leslie County, the Elgin Foundation, and I'm not sure if Elgin works in Jackson County or not, I see some heads nodding, but one of the areas that they provide support is around dental care. It's great if you're a young person, but what they recognized was where it ends with middle school and high school kids, there was a real need there. And so the school coordinator and the project director worked with a couple of local healthcare providers, and now every single kiddo receives dental care all the way through. When they did the first original screening, I guess maybe back in the fall with the middle school and high school kids, there's something like 60 kids with acute immediate dental needs, and they were able to have all of those kids served and their dental needs met. So as you hold the community school, one thing we say is, it's based on a high-quality curriculum, and as Mr. Smith was reading your mission statement a few minutes ago, it's got that core academic and even the student being recognized, congratulations, being recognized, that it all stands on a high-quality curriculum. Once you have that in place, then how do we support kids with wraparound services, with after-school tutoring, with family engagement, with tracking data? And I know, working with Ms. Norris over the years, that's something that you all do and do well, that's really tailored to the needs of the individual school.
Do you have any questions? I mean, I guess I will say that part of the hiring process will be to hire people local to Jackson County for your schools. And that process will occur alongside your school, your school, your admin, your teachers, whoever you designate. So they will be PRI employees, but your school district, your schools, will have a large role in hiring those people in your buildings.
I'll say one more thing about that. One, the positions are advertised right now, so I know Mr. Smith has the link, and I've encouraged him to share it, and I'm sure he has. But as folks apply, when they go in to apply, they'll run into a drop-down menu. If you have somebody that just wants to work in Jackson County, because all 12 counties or all 12 school districts are listed, just select Jackson County, and what we're able to do is to pull all the Jackson County applicants, and then work with Mr. Smith and his team to say, "Who do you want to interview? They're our employees, but they're your residents and things." The other thing that I would add to it is, one of the things that we believe, we want kids to thrive and succeed, and part of that succeeding is kids with post-secondary attainment, okay? Notice I didn't say four-year degree. We were at Berea College, we had to say four-year degree, but I think we all can look around and go, there are folks who are successful in our communities, who have a high-value certificate, have an associate's degree. So when you see those positions posted, the minimum educational requirement is an associate's degree. We know, we have folks who are working in our community with an associate's degree, and they have a ton of experience, and they're going to be able to step into these spots because they're not teachers, they're really connectors, is what they are. So thinking, "Oh, we get another teacher," I say, "Nope, it's not an instructional position, it's really a connecting position." Where increasing family engagement, finding those wraparound services and who can partner. I happen to be a board member with White House Clinics, so as you want to start, when you've got Bo, you've got Mr. Gabbard, you don't even worry about me, you've got him, who's also on the board. But to think about those partnerships and how we can grow those to support kids, I just wanted to add that about the hiring.
Thank you. It's a great opportunity for our school district, we're very grateful to be included and looking forward to working.
Thank you all so much.
Move on to item two C, which is the Tyner Elementary School presentation. Ms. Phil Pop, whenever you're ready.
Okay, hey, good to meet you. Thank you all, first of all, for allowing our kiddos and us to come. I can't come without them, so you get the kids today, and it's exciting. I do have to share a few things about our school. I told Tanya, "Get ready, I'm winded, because you gave me an opportunity or a floor to talk about my school and how good it is." Do you have to tell me to sit down? Go ahead, where's my clipboard? We grabbed it, you got it, Miss Gabbard? Okay. I just want to go back really quick, and Ms. Gabbard knows where that starts. I wanted you to see, we got some drone footage, this is the first thing, and I'm excited because I've not had a leak, okay? I've dealt with leaks for four years, we've not had a leak. I'm thrilled, this is like, you know, we're excited. We have a new roof, and I want you to see it. I don't know if you've had an opportunity, this is the roof before, and I love this footage because this is something you don't get to see. And it's exciting for us because that's what it looked like before, I won't show the whole video, but I did want to show you what it looks like now, and it's beautiful, and it works, and it's perfect, and we're excited. So I wanted to show you that, because that was two-thirds of our school year, we've dealt with dust and banging, and we've moved rooms and traded in and out, and the kids have been so patient with this, so they, we are excited, because there's no more drifts, and we were ready for it. So I wanted to show you guys that, just a little bit of that drone footage. The next thing is, over Christmas break, we got a gym renovation, our floor looks amazing, and we have a new cardinal head in the middle that we're super pumped about. Ours was very dated, so the Jackson County work release came in over Christmas break, and they turned that floor into what looks brand-new, it looks beautiful. So we're so excited about that. I didn't know if any of you had got to see pictures of it, but this is where it all happens at Tyner, we do a lot of things in our gym. And the public's in there, so we're really super proud that it looks like that. And I just really want to shout out again to Brian Gabbard, because he works with us when the kids are gone and during breaks like that, he works with us very good, and so he got those guys in there, they had that done in no time. I can't, y'all, I'm competitive, I'm a baller, so I have to brag on our ball team, because they are so proud of themselves, but we've pretty much done a clean sweep this year of the district basketball, and they're not letting me not throw that in there. So we're talking about basketball for a minute. Our kids, I have more teams than anyone, we have a lot of kids that sign up to play, and everybody plays at our school, if you want to play. We encourage everybody to play. So I had, I think altogether, nine basketball teams, so that's a lot for an elementary school. But we won all the leagues, I'm going to throw that out there once again. But I just wanted you to recognize, and I've got some pictures on there, all of our second and third grade girls and boys, fourth and fifth grade girls and boys, those are your little winning groups. And the tournament, shout out to the tournament, to West Bishop for putting that on, it's a lot of work, it's very busy nights, but they had a blast. And then we had the runners-ups in two, three, four, five boys. Also, I can't not mention our Cardinal crazes team, our dance team, our cheer team, our coaching staff. This is a major operation during basketball season, there's a lot of teams and a lot of events and a lot of kids involved, so we have super great parents and supporters that are telling these kids everywhere, back and forth to practices and games, and it's a lot. And I can't not mention Joyce Wilson for scheduling it all, our secretary at school, she keeps everybody scheduled and everybody gets to practice. So I've got some pictures of our teams, there they are, there's our other two basketball teams, and then that's our cheer team, and there's our little dancing babies, and I love them all, and they work really hard, and as you can see, it's a very big group. So we have a lot of kids invested in something, if you know, a ball team, a cheer squad, all the way down to the littles, kindergarten on the dance team. So there's a lot of people involved during our ball season, and we're proud of that. We have a really, really great community that supports our kids, our parents and grandparents and our guardians. Okay, this is probably what they're most proud of, and you can make fun of that outfit, but honey, I worked hard on that, okay? That is all green. I was so proud of our schools, our kids, they worked so hard, so we were, on KSA, we were a green level school, which we were so excited about. That was a big jump for us, and it was our first time since I've been there getting a score that pretty much I say counts, you know? So we were excited, our kids are excited, and it has given us so much to work for this year, because we're destined to be blue. Okay, this was just a few snapshots, that we decorated our halls for them, we got inflatables for the kids to celebrate this, because KSA is that important to us, that we put a lot of emphasis on it. Our teacher, the whole staff matched that day, we put same shirts on, and we just really, really made a big deal out of it for the kids, and they all got to play on inflatables, and we had a big celebration for them, because it's that important, kids, their success is important, and each individual brings Tyner success, so we made sure they all got to celebrate. This is just a little something I wanted to throw in, a part of our reading push, I have a morning, a meet every morning with all the kids, they all see me every morning on a Google Meet, we get all these other plates together, we talk, I do shout-outs, any kind of, anything that's going on, if it's 100 IREDS lessons passed, 100 AR points, whatever is going on in that classroom, teachers send them to me the day before, and that morning I do shout-outs for all the kids. They love seeing, getting to come to the front of the camera, because all of the rooms are on that meet, so they can see all the classrooms. So they get to come up to the camera, and they'll wave, and we do shout-outs for that kid. Well, we started this year, morning meet, book talks, and this has been really cool, the kids love it. This is right in late, she'd done our first book talk this year, she was very brave. They just get on, they talk about a book they're reading, they tell kids whether or not they like it or recommend it, it's just a cute little thing. I just wanted to throw that up because it has really sparked an interest, kids are wanting to be that person now, telling about their book. The next thing, we were asked to do part of our PBI, our CCIS, the things that we're involved in right now with, and with our PBRs, our new initiatives. One of the things that they asked Tyner to do this year is pilot a school-wide hearing and vision screening. We have completed that, Ms. Carla Coffey, our school nurse, and her direct supervisor, our district supervisor, completed these screenings, I think probably a month ago they finished them, it was efficient, we set the program in place, we kind of just set what we wanted to do, the protocol, and I think they're going to take that and initiate that through the district, and the other schools will do that, but this is big, this is something that we needed, and we're excited about getting that. School-wide, everybody's had a hearing and a vision training, and so that's important, very important in education. PBI, I just, I touched on this back in the fall with you all, our new initiative store, and this is just, I wanted to throw some pictures, because we're all about the kids, I want you to see them. These are, they're getting their strategic gifts, or they've gone to the store, they're showing you what they bought. On Monday mornings, I call winners out, and they go to the store, we have a store, and they get to buy things, or pick things out when they win, and they like it, yes, yes, they like going to the store, they like getting their name called. I call the winners, they earn tickets for good behavior all week, whether, you know, I mean, it's successful, and we're really excited about it, because this was a new initiative we put in this year. Okay, next, this is, I hurried, I told you I would be very fast, because I have an outstanding group with me today, I am so proud of them, their leader is phenomenal, I can't rave enough about her, it's Ms. Ashley Gabbard, she teaches fifth grade math at Tyner, and she runs, she is our STLP coordinator. I'm going to turn it over to her, and she's going to turn these gift lists on you, they are impressive, and they have done some really great things for our community. So, guys, to Ashley Gabbard.
If you all care, I'd like to introduce the ones that are with me today. I have Gavin Tamayo, Hannah Gabbard, Kaia Gray, Grace Spurlock, Rhea Judd, Kersey Barrett, Remy Vingham, Kenneth Bond, Jackson Coffey, Dawson Wagers, Derek Gabbard, Marley Coffey, and Hadley Stewart. And that's just probably, we're probably pushing about half of our STLP group. Last year, this was about all we had total, but this year, we had, I think it was like 35 students sign up for STLP. STLP is a student technology leadership program, and so we are taking those technology standards that are the Kentucky technology standards, and we are putting them into place in school and outside of school. And I want to recognize some of them just very quickly for all of the different things that they've done this year. So I know you all didn't, they didn't know that I was going to do this. If you have participated in after-school activities at any point during the year, please stand up. And you'll notice that all of them that are here did stand. If you have participated in any of the robotics that we've done this year, please stay standing, it's like the Spiro Heroes, if you participated in the robotics, please stay standing. You all don't know. What about if you participated in the coding with Scratch and the block coding programs? That's when you all use Scratch, any time during the year, if you use Scratch. If you participated in creating animations on Brush Ninja, stay standing. Dawson, I know that you, Dawson and Jackson are my animation kings. If you presented at Region, stand up. If you turned in a product this year, stay standing. Jackson, you turned in a product for animations.
I brought Kina too.
Okay, so as you can, and I have more, like, we have more, but I wanted to pick on them, because some of them have been involved in a whole waterfines this year, a whole lot of things. We turned in 22 products, you all sit down. We turned in 22 products to the district. 18 of those went on the Region, and we have six state semifinalists that with their products, and I want to call them by name, I think some of them are here. Kersey Barrett, Kersey turned in an original photo, you can show them, hold it up and show them. It is a photo of fire, and she had to explain her process for using that, for creating that original photo. So Kersey is a state semifinalist. Hannah Gabbard is a state semifinalist in multimedia mashup. She doesn't have anything to show you, because hers is multimedia and it's on YouTube, so she can't walk hers around and show you, but she is one of our state semifinalists this year that will be competing at the state competition in April. Dawson Wagers, also an original photo that is a state semifinalist. Who has Adeline's digital art? Okay, Mia's going to bring Adeline McLean's digital art. Adeline created this herself on an iPad, this is like by hand, she freehanded with an pen and pencil. This is also a state semifinalist, Adeline is a third grader at Tyner Elementary. And Derek Gabbard had two products that are now state semifinalists. One of those was a logo design, and the other was an infographic, and the infographic we're going to show you here in a little bit, because we actually created, he created that, we had it printed for a purpose, and so he's going to bring those around to you to show you. So these are state semifinalists. Grace Spurlock created a manipulated image that made it to Region that did not, is not a state semifinalist, but it is phenomenal, manipulative, she had two original photos. Some of the judges were a little picture this year than I expected. Marley Coffey had digital music that competed in Region. Jackson Coffey had an animation, those are online, and we can't physically show you those. He had animation that competed in Region. Kaia Gray also had a manipulated image that competed in Region. Kersey Barrett also had another manipulated image. Kersey's manipulated image is pixelated, it was a photo that she took herself and then created using like a pixel art. And Remy Vingham had an original photo. I like to show off these videos, because these are their creations, this is not something, I just kind of make sure that they are turned in. That's really what I make sure that they turn.
These are elementary students.
Yeah, these are, most of, I have like four, five third graders that are regulars, and then the rest of these kids are fourth and fifth grade. And then the rest of these kids are fourth and fifth grade and you think about the materials that they've just showed you. The music that they've created. And the fact that, I'll be honest with you, some of these kids are much better speakers than Tyler. I mean, they are phenomenal. And I want to kind of let some of them go on some of those things. I want to let them tell you what they've been doing. So, some of our STLP team, we have two projects that also made it to the state. We're in Level Two State with two of those projects, one of them being Help Desk, one Help Desk girls. Come on over here, please. Go ahead. Maureen Grace, Maureen Grace, Hannah Dawson. I call Dawson a girl, but you don't care. Dawson goes both sides of things, so. Last year, the three girls were involved in a live challenge where they won the state competition. So, this year, they're back in Help Desk. Grace, go ahead and kind of explain to them what Help Desk is about and what you all been doing. I put them on the spot. I didn't tell them that they were going to use Help Desk. Just so you know, I like to throw things at them. They're preparing for a state competition. I've got to get them prepared.
Help Desk is sort of like what we do to help out our school technology-wise. And we, we do like a lot of presentations on certain topics and we talk about ways that some of the STLP students at our school have failed. And yeah, that's basically, this is so many.
Hannah, tell them right before, right before our first NTI, what you're doing with the kindergarten students.
We have been logging to the building classroom.
Okay, so, the kindergarten students have no touchscreen Chromebooks this year. And they had been using iPads, right? And so, now they're all in the building classroom and you have a lot of kindergarten students and you're trying to get them all logged in. So, the kindergarten teachers decided that they needed a little more help than what they had. And so, I sent four of our Help Desk members down to the kindergarten classrooms. And like if you walk around and look at this bottom board, that's a Help Desk. And you can see the pictures of them helping the kindergarten students as fourth graders. The ones that went were fourth graders. So, as fourth graders, they went down to the kindergarten classroom and helped those kindergarten students to log into the building classroom and make sure that all of their login information weren't because these are, I mean, I can send them pretty much anywhere. They are very determined, but they are very like, they're dependable. I don't have to worry about what they're doing because they know, they don't have to call me. They don't have to call me. They can do it themselves. I also had, they worked with Screencastify with some of our teachers. So, Screencastify is a video recording platform. And some of our teachers are going, they're getting their rank one or they're getting their masters and they're having to record because these are virtual classes. They're having to record videos and turn those into their own classes. So, our students have been helping our teachers to be able to create their video interviews. And so, it's pretty nice to see that the, these kids have never like, after 2010, most of these kids, I think all of these kids were born after 2010. So, they have never known the world without technology. So, if I were to, if I were to say I need this fixed, I can pretty much just call on one of those. I call them all these kids and they're like, well, I can fix that. I know how to do it. And so, we use our students, we also have a schedule where they work in the media, they can work in the media center so that they help our librarian, Ms. Huff, or Ms. Neely to be able to just like if there's a Chromebook issue, they know how to read, like restart or refresh the operating system if they need to. They know how, like if it's not charging or it's not turning on, they know how, they know the simple fixes to be able to fix those things. So, I depend on them a lot just in regular class. Like my fifth grade classroom, I'm like, hey, go, go fix so-and-so's Chromebook for them while I'm still doing this. And so, I depend on them for that. You all can sit down. These four also regularly contribute in our big project. So, I wanted to get some of those things kind of out of the way because we have a really big project going on in our STLP with our STLP children. It's a huge project. I'm not going to lie. It's a big project. At Region, they received a perfect, they had zero deductions and that was when, I'm talking about four students presenting virtually to judges. And they presented their project and at that point, it was just an idea. And their idea received zero deductions. So, I want to talk about our big project and I'm going to let some of the kids hand off some of the things that we have kind of to show. So, they were invited over to Appalachian Imagination Podcast to discuss their upcoming tourism project. So, they have been working with the tourism in Jackson County. And it's not like, we're not creating new tourism. We're just making the things that are here more accessible. And so, if you want to create a quick one, so the microphone are here. And we won't, like, I'm not going to ask you to listen to the whole, to the whole thing, but they are on Spotify, which is currently heard, this is currently, could be heard in twenty-five different countries. So, we took them over to the radio station and they were asked off the what, like, there's no script. They just answered questions. And so, if they, if you click on the mic, and we won't listen to it all, I just want to show you that. So, they each, each group had like a twenty-minute session, four kids at a time.
Welcome to Appalachian Imagination.
Your podcast for all things?
Irritating to me, you know? So, hey, that was really cool.
I've got questions, so I may be calling you.
Might have to hire them to shoot a video sometime.
They can tell.
That would be cool. What do you do when you're not in the STLP program? Sounds like it keeps you pretty busy.
School, yeah.
School.
Basketball.
Oh, you play basketball?
Yeah.
And what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Oh, you're going to middle school next year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Going to be throwing in the pot with the rest of them. That's pretty cool. We've got some that's just looking so shy right now. They're going to have to get over.
They talked about our tourism project. They talked about some of our QR codes and things like that.
I want to, yeah, I want to show them the pictures. There's one of them there.
Okay, so they're, they are at the radio station and also in front of the microphones. That's one group up there in front of the microphone. And you can go get them. Okay, so this was one of our, this is the most impressive thing to me. They went, first of all, they went down to the Tourism Commission and they presented their project there. And what we kind of, what they presented to the Tourism Commission is that we wanted to help them to be more accessible in Jackson County. And while we were down there, Derek, let's take Derek and Kaia and Remy and Kenneth. Let's take you four. And go ahead. And while we were down there, Kenneth, you get the QR codes on the mic, please. While we were down there, I asked her a few things, but these kids had already created videos. So, on the paper that Kenneth's passing out, there are two videos. Okay. Derek, can we go ahead and talk about the videos that you put on this page?
One of the videos on there, the first viewer on the left, it's about the history of Jackson County. It tells about D.C. Scam. It will take you to a YouTube channel. But anyways, the video is about the history of Jackson and tells when it was founded, what was its first name. And in the second one, I think it's the Veterans Memorial.
How much do you put on that?
It should be the Veterans Memorial. And it talks about the Veterans Memorial and why it was started building. There's certain people that say on there and more on our YouTube channel. There's some more videos about Flatland and then there's a QR code here.
Tell them what this top QR code, you can scan any of the, these are legitimate QR codes. You can scan any of these and they will either take you to a video or to a site. Will you tell them what the QR codes are on here?
So, one of the reasons that we wanted to go to the physical court is because we wanted to help it easier so so waiting in line to go to the list in the scanning QR code, which is up there. And it takes, and you can look at the list of names. It tells you what's, what flag they're on and the number of the flag and what that's serving. And we're planning on trying, we're going to try to make a website where you just type in their name and it shows the picture of them. And then just tells stuff about their involvement.
That's a very important code.
Yeah.
People.
Yeah, the ones on there is just the Veterans Memorial video and the T-shirt exactly. But the ones up there, I know what the other two is. I forgot what I put in there. So, the veterans list is the name of the veteran.
If you were to scan the veterans this year, it takes you to the list of people that are listed on our Veterans Memorial down in the key. And it also, which I can look up to those names. It has like the stone number and like what line they're on. So, like we just have the one book, I think it is, down at the Veterans Memorial. So, if there were a lot of people there, you'd have to stand and look for it. But using this QR code, you can go ahead and know like where you're going. You don't have to stand in line. You just, and these are things that we're going to put in different places in Jackson County. And so, like what he was talking about, he kind of went ahead, but we talked with the Tourism Commission about the different videos. Like one of these videos has Dawson, I think. The one on the brochure has Dawson reading the information about Flatland Falls. And then we have another young lady that was reading the information about how the Veterans Memorial, like all of the granite and why we have the Veterans Memorial. And then we have the history of Jackson County that Derek created. There's another QR code about.
About the Off-Road Association.
The Off-Road Association. You can tell if he knows, they don't want to know more because they're going to do it, but I can't even remember.
All our information from the Off-Road Association and one of the reasons we met with them is because we wanted their copyright. So, we ain't going to use any kind of name with their permission.
So, tell them about the brochure.
Go ahead, one of you, I don't have anything to. This brochure, well, I'll let you, I'm going to sit back. You all do everything I do. Can you go ahead? You have my brochure.
You have the brochure.
The brochure, it's there as I told you.
Why didn't they have the brochure, Ms. Gabbert?
Go ahead.
So, on the front page, it's.
Tell them why you have the brochure first of all.
Well, we have the brochure first of all is because there wasn't really a site that you could visit the, not a site to visit for the thing.
For the campground.
For the campground. And it tells stuff in the middle here on the thing, on the brochure, it says, it's how you can renovate.
Reserve.
Reserve.
Reserve. A campground. And it tells how, it tells about the campsite. But that's one of the reasons and another reason is because they didn't have the brochure. They wouldn't have helped out that.
When I went, when I went to the Tourism Commission and presented to them, that was one of the things that the Tourism Commission requested. They actually requested that our STLP group created a brochure that they could use in the county. That they could take and put at Flatland Falls or at the Freedom Ridge Welcome Center. So, that was something that they asked for them to do. So, they went back after the Tourism Commission meeting and. Tell them what I've used. What did you use?
We used Canva and we paid for these and stuff like that. We use Canva to create these and they had a selection of what we wanted to make and we used Canva and I mean.
Well, so they used, it's a soft, well, it's an app that is called Canva. And that's what our presentation here is on to. Like they have presentations, you can do brochures. And so, they, he created the brochure on Canva. This is actually a state semifinalist as well. And he created it for the purpose of giving it to the Tourism Commission though, because they requested that. And so, the QR code on there actually will take you to Flatland Falls. They also over here on the board behind them, you can go show them. I don't hate no doubt. We, I paid for these and so there's only like twelve of them. I wanted to make sure that they worked before we bought anymore. Remy, tell them why they're on that type of paper.
Because I had the idea instead of two flats, that would be there forever to use window clings and it would be used for like the places to clean.
So, these are window clings that we were planning on putting at like Dairy Queen or the Freedom Ridge Welcome Center or at Flatland Falls. And if you scan that QR code, it takes you directly to the book your site reservation site for Flatland Falls Campground. So, when you scan it, instead of having to search, it just takes you directly to the campground website. Right now, there's not really an easy way to find that information. Like in order to find the reservation site for Flatland Falls, you have to go to Flatland Falls, which kind of defeats the purpose. And so, if these QR codes are placed at popular places in our county, then it may encourage more people to come use the Flatland Falls Campground because it's accessible. You know, that's one of the things in Jackson County and they talked to the judges about that. We have a lot of things to offer here. We have some fantastic students. We have some fantastic people here. But a lot of it, a lot of the reason that we don't get what we deserve really is because we are not as accessible as some of the other places. Like I would put these kids right here. I'd put them up against anybody. I'm ridiculously proud of them. They are top of the line. They do anything you ask and they're more than capable of doing things that I'm not capable of doing. But that is just, we're not as accessible. So, our goal is to become more accessible to the community, to our community, but also, I mean, there's tons of people who are, who have like Airbnbs and that was something that. Kai, where's that?
Over here.
Something that Kai had talked about. Kai had talked about Airbnbs and the fact that, I mean, I'm sure that somebody in maybe even your all's family and our family and Kai's family have an Airbnb that they would like to see rented out. And something else that the Tourism Commission had talked about, and there was no way that we could do all of these things in one school year. Because these are still fifth, fourth and fifth grade students who have a long day of school every day and I'm still a fifth grade teacher. And so, it's not, I mean, we say after school once and twice a week, we do things after school during, like they, sometimes they'll give up PE to come and work on these products and these projects because they love it that much. And they want to see our county and our schools be successful. And so, you know, like the Tourism Commission had also asked us to create like a welcome packet that would go possibly in every Airbnb in our county so that they all had the same information about where the best places to eat were. Or the best, maybe like the Off-Road Association with the trails or horseback rides or the fact that we've got these new rally cars coming in. And a lot of those things, it just, we don't know about. Like we don't know about those events. And so, these students all behind me here are all working for one goal. And that is to make sure that Jackson County is somewhere that they are happy to live in and they want to stay.
We got one of the maybe, I can't remember, but they asked, they told us about the new water park, the squash path. And they asked us to think, make the brochure for that place for the upcoming.
We talked.
Yeah, we're very proud of them and that, that is, I think that's it. I think that's all. Unless you all have questions for our STLP.
I just want to say you guys are doing a great job.
They're remarkable kids and their leader, their coach, their coach is something else. She has taken this project and ran with it and the county is responding. When you, when you're fourth and fifth graders and you get invited to the fiscal court meeting and you get invited to the tourism meeting and then they want you to come back because they want you to do something else for them, it's a big deal. And they are responding and they're, like she said, they can do so much more than we can. They live in a, they, this is their world, technology, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you all.
Item two E, personnel report and substitute report. As always, that's a proposal for your review. Communications may have completed, I'll turn the meeting over to Chairman Leely with item number three.
Item number three is approval of will of claims with motion.
Move it, pay.
The second.
Taken.
Mrs. Hysen. Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number four, approval of February twenty-one, twenty-two, three, regular blue four, meeting. Second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
No, do that.
Mrs. Hysen. Yes, me. Item five, approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year agreement between the Jackson County Board of Education and the Jackson County Service Department, right, the parent school, the resource officer, SRO, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Item six, approval to advertise position for food service, items for the Jackson County Public Schools Food Service Department for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, need a motion?
First.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Item seven, approval of Jackson County High School Youth Center Services Center twenty-twenty-three summer student work, career appropriate, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Item eight, approval of community collaboration agreement between the Jackson County Board of Education and the Daniel Community Action Agency, need a motion?
They approve.
Item six.
Second.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Item nine, approval of six, one forty-five flexible, benefit plan, need a motion? Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Item ten, approval to award bid to, for the P L M, while handling subject, panel installation of a repair project, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Item eleven, approval to award a bid for the Jackson County High School Cafeteria, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Item twelve, approval to advertise for the request of a proposal for outdoor freezer units for the Food Service Department, need a motion?
They approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Item fourteen, approval to establish and reestablish positions, need a motion?
Vote approve.
Second.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Hysen.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Item fourteen, approval of fundraiser, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hysen.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
Item fifteen, there was no public, sign, uh, people, top. So item sixteen, approval to adjourn, need a motion?
They adjourn.
Need a second.